Okay, I think we're ready to go on this end, but we did miss what you may have said. So are we ready to start now?
You are ready. When you're ready, take off.
All right, well, thank you. I feel like there's a lot of buildup now for what I'm gonna say, but I will do my best to provide a brief summary introduction to our budget for this year. Already started out as a very unusual year for us and headed into this budget. Both our schedule and the content of the budget are gonna be a little different than what you're accustomed to. We continue to be great uncertainty about the lasting implications of COVID-19. We think we've got a very good understanding of the short-term implications, but we just don't know how the economy is gonna react, how long this will last, or if there's gonna be any kind of prolonged recession that may affect our revenues that are largely development-driven. We have made several assumptions in the budget that you're gonna hear tonight or discuss tonight. There's a potential impact on development-related revenues, and those have been adjusted to like a worst-case scenario. And those revenues primarily are building permit revenues, inspection fees, and deed stamps. So those vary greatly depending on how the economy and how our development is paced. We also will see unprecedented decline in our hospitality tax revenues since the restaurants have not been open. They're open for takeout only, they do still pay tax on that, but it is greatly reduced in then again, our long-term projections. If we have less development, we will see our growth of a mill be much slower than what we've seen in recent years. We have trimmed budget expenses significantly in an attempt to reduce the amount of fund balance that will we need to offset the loss of revenues this year. In comparison to other budgets, fiscal year 21 will be a bare-bones budget. We've made cuts in most areas, most departments, but with the intent to maintain county services in the near term. There are very few new positions in this budget. Any vacancies we see come that are included in the budget are the ones outside those under the control of elected officials will be scrutinized and will require county management approval in order to fill those vacancies. We have greatly reduced our travel and training expenses in an event, again, to reduce the fund balance appropriation. Fund balance appropriation this year is just scheduled to be just under $3.2 million for general fund operations. That represents less than 10% of our total fund balance. Our fund balances in place just for times like this, and we can use that over multiple years if necessary to sustain the operations of the county. The use of fund balance reserves will likely be less if COVID, the impact of COVID-19 is less than the worst-case scenario. We do have some contingency plans built into the budget if economic recovery is faster than what we expect, or for some reason we incur additional expenses that we have not budgeted for. As always, the departments have the ability to move funds within their own budget. County management also has a contingency account, and management can approve budget override for expenses that will exceed the amount we budgeted. One final thing I wanted to cover in my summary is reallocation of some expenditures in the millage in the general fund. So there are personnel expenses related to our insurance costs that have been reallocated from the general fund to be allocated to the sheriff and the solicitor. And that equates to about one mill in the general fund. Eight tenths of that will be absorbed by the sheriff's office, and two tenths will be absorbed by the solicitor's office. At this point, I'll ask Kevin to go into some more detail on a few specific county funds.
Good evening, everyone. First one I want to talk about is hospitality tax fund. Before everything happened with the virus, we were projecting about $3 million in revenue in that fund. Right now, the budget is a million dollars in revenue. In order to make our debt payment and everything associated with Project Riverbend, as well as fund the CVB, the $300,000 that they were scheduled to receive, we are going to use up pretty much all of our reserves that we had accumulated in that fund at this point. You know, the way things have progressed and the discussion of a second wave, you know, I have concerns about that million dollars being something we can meet. That's a very fluid situation, something that I expect, you know, I'd like to hear y'all's feedback on tonight is how we're approaching that fund, and if y'all feel comfortable with using the reserves as planned, or want to take a different approach with that particular fund. Another fund, the convenience centers and the MRF. The MRF is really, those expenses should be borne by the general fund. I went back and researched, going back to the 90s when Ann Hardy was the treasurer at York County, as to how we were handling the recycling. And recycling was always meant to be a general fund expense. Right now, for instance, a portion, about a third of 40% of the cost on the convenience centers is borne by the general fund. The fund right now set up the millage that's in the unincorporated area to fund the recycling centers or convenience centers. It's not covering the expenses. The biggest driver in that is the recycling. We do have nothing in the budget for this year to address that, but next year, we're going to need to deal with that. Again, the opening of the MRF, about a million dollars of new expenses came online when we did that. Lake Wiley Park, that's another fund that we're gonna see some changes in the budget, adding new personnel to that fund. That is a special tax district paid by that district. Those personnel were omitted from the first budget by mistake. They were put back in. We need those personnel to open that park up, so that will not impact anything outside the special tax district. The debt service fund, as y'all know, the auditor levies the millage for that. Right now, we're projecting there to actually be a decrease in the millage in that fund. It will be determined and finalized this fall. I don't think the value of a mill is gonna drop lower than we have projected right now, so we should get to see a small decrease in that particular fund. Those are the funds that, when I go through this budget, that I look at that I think would garner some discussion tonight. We're gonna get, and I'm gonna turn it over to Andy to talk about the rural fire fund, as well as some of the other special tax district fire funds, and they have changes in their millage, or he might want to discuss with y'all.
Good evening. Real quick, we're talking in the rural fire fund, a four-tenths of a mill increase. You'll recall last year, when we have a substantial fund or have had a substantial fund balance for a number of years there, and the idea was to spend it down and raise the millage over a number of years to balance it out to where we've got a manageable, a manageable fund, a manageable revenue stream coming in there, and to be able to purchase capital equipment out of that fund balance to where it levels off, to where it's more reasonable. So what you're looking at here in the rural fund is a rural fire fund is a four-tenths of a mill increase. The purpose of this, we look to buy a new tanker chassis out of that, two new QRVs for personnel that we hope to add. We've recommended four full-time positions, and a, well, right now, we have four full-time positions, and then one, what's called PRN position, that we are recommending be added to that budget. You'll see that Riverview has a two-tenths of a mill increase, looking to buy some equipment upgrade and replace some aging equipment. Bethel Fire Tax is at four-tenths of a mill, and Newport is at two-tenths of a mill. But beyond that, there are no changes in millage at any of the other tax districts.
Thank you, Andy. With all that said, do y'all want to start going through? You gonna start with the general fund? Any questions we might can answer or need to address, or jump into the hospitality tax fund?
Anybody?
I'll speak up, just, I have a question on the MRF. We've talked in the past about starting to take recyclables from the other municipalities and having them pay something along the way. Where are we at on that, and how does that affect the losing that we have going on in recyclables and in that facility?
Right now, what we get for the revenue for the recyclings is probably 10% of what it was a couple of years ago. It's just completely dropping off, dropped off.
Yeah.
You know, I was contacted by Greenville County about taking some of their recyclables over here, and honestly, the more we use that MRF, the quicker it's gonna depreciate and wear down. I don't think, right now, that would be profitable and necessarily a wise thing to do. The way it stands right now, with recycling revenues being practically nothing, that MRF is set up to lose, again, about a million dollars a year. If recycling revenues go up, I don't think it will ever overcome that million dollars. It's just an expense, unfortunately, when the county made the decision to build that MRF, the day is coming where we're gonna have to pay that tab. And again, we have that projected to be a millage increase in next year's budget to cover those expenses.
Kevin, what's the ratio of those expenses? What are those fixed compared to variable? Are those fixed costs?
Most of those costs are fixed costs. There's some staff added, I think there's one or two staff added to work at the recycling right now, but most of those are fixed costs to run the center. I think, right now, it's running at three days, going up to four days, so we're not at full capacity. But again, adding capacity, you're not gonna add much revenue right now with the current prices of recycling. That could change down the road.
Well, and not only that, it's not running currently. So for the last two months, we've not operated the MRF.
So reducing capacity doesn't really reduce the cost, either?
No, sir.
Well, that seems like a bad position.
Well, recycling is a service we're providing, and really, to wrap my head around that, I've just accepted it as a service we're providing our taxpayers. It is certainly not gonna be a moneymaker, and I do not believe in the near future we're going to come close to covering our costs. But again, it's a service we're providing our taxpayers.
Have we ever tried to figure out how much less we spend hauling stuff to the landfill in Richland County by doing this recycling? I mean, I know that's not a direct income, but that's got to be a little savings for us on that side.
Eric Rickett has, he's given me some numbers in the past, like, I can't tell you those off the top of my head. We do save some money by not putting that, you know, on the trucks going down to Richland County. It's not that significant, but there is some savings in that.
Wasn't there a time several years ago when our recycling was turning a profit? I remember when David Harmon was, David Harmon and I had a conversation years ago about recycling was able to make a few dollars.
This was before we opened the MRF, and when the recycling, the money we got from recycling was substantially higher than it is now.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good.
Okay, I appreciate what the staff's done with this in terms of the general fund. General countywide, not raising the millage. In fact, it looks like a .3 reduction in millage. I mean, certainly, this is not the time to be raising taxes on any York County citizen. And what I see is the increase, the special tax districts, that's per their own governing boards and what they feel they need.
Yes, sir.
Family fire department issues, so I understand that. I know you and I talked a little bit about if we could give, like, I mentioned a 10 or 15 to help people out, but of course, even if it was a practical thing to do, it's very insignificant when we consider 20% of the bill, you know, property taxes. You know, it's not gonna really make a big dent, but per your discussion with me about maybe considering like a million-dollar general fund withdrawal as far as loan for small businesses, and maybe have a small local buyer, like Bank of York Administrate, you know, I think that'd be a great thing to do for our small business people, to be able to get those loans and try to work with them a little bit in the way things are going right now.
Yes, sir. Let me try to-
Small businesses in York County.
I'll try to expand upon that to the rest of the council.
And am I not hearing well, or is everybody else hearing staff easily?
There's some cutting in and out on my end.
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna make it, but it's kinda tough.
Okay.
So if I put my ear toward the monitor, it's just, I'm just trying to hear better. And no, it's not all age, it's just a defective computer.
Yes, sir. I guess, let me bring over to speak with the conversation Dr. Blackwell and I had in the last week. He called me up and asked if it would be practical to reduce for one year our taxes by a flat 10% or something along those lines. I told him I did not believe that would be practical. It would probably not have a positive impact on our credit rating, and recovering those mills would take a long time. I did share with him at that point in time something the mayor of York had reached out to me about as an idea, would the county possibly consider taking some of our reserves and working with a local bank? And nobody's talked with Bank of York about this, they're just an example of a local bank, to try to do some loan program for small businesses. And as I told the mayor of York, that is not something we're in the business to do. However, you know, I would put that in the category of difficult, but if council desired to do something like that, that could possibly work, possibly. A lot of obstacles to be overcome in doing something like that. I don't think we want to loan money to businesses that recently opened, or may or may not be viable after the fact. That was just really an idea that if council had a desire to pursue that, management would be willing to drill down into that and find out what all the obstacles specifically are, and determine if there's a path forward on that.
And Kevin, if I could speak to that for a moment, I spoke with the mayor of York as well, and I reached out to my counterpart, the county commissioner of District 3 in Mecklenburg County, and talked about what they did and how they did it. And he gave me some details. I'm still trying to catch up with the county economic development director, who is, who actually runs their program for them. But back after 2008, after the Great Recession, as a council, they made the decision to move $2.5 million out of the general fund to put into a fund to start doing small business and micro-business loans, and they partnered with a local lending institution. They, the council set up the parameters they were looking for, the applications, that type thing, working with that institution. And then that institution charges the county a percentage of each loan for loaning it and doing it, and they do it, he said he believed a 3% rate is what the business pays the county back. But that was the little bit of information he was able to give me about what they did and how they did it.
Did that lender set the criteria for what, who would be eligible or not eligible, and screen the applicants?
They screened the applicants, but he said the council set the criteria because they wanted it to be, they were trying to help people who did not qualify for some of the loans otherwise, which makes them a little riskier loan.
Okay. Again, that's an idea for council to entertain, if council would so desire. Management can, again, further drill down into that and see if there's a path forward.
I would hope the council members would at least explore it as a possibility for small businesses concerning, you know, based on whatever criteria that would be practical. I mean, just a way to help out small businesses, and like you said, more established businesses, not ones just starting up, but, you know, just helping out the small guys a little bit.
And I hope to speak to their economic development director this week and get more information on it, and I'll forward what I can along to everybody when I get more information.
I have some questions about the, unmuted.
You're unmuted.
About the fire board increase, it looks like from the summary that you've given us, it's a 12% increase. And I think what I heard you say was that a, is that a .4 mil increase?
Yes, ma'am, it is four-tenths of a mil.
Advisory. My questions have to do with, I know that we don't have a director there right now. Has the advisory board been involved in that? Are they aware of what these changes are? And ought we maybe need to consider waiting until we have somebody on board before we do that, if I'm reading that right, and that's an increase?
It is an increase, and we have discussed this with the advisory board. As far as waiting goes, as you know, that emergency management director Chuck Haines has been intimately involved in this process from the get-go, and really, this is a continuation of the plan that we had hoped to implement last year, that by and large, I think a number of the chiefs were in favor of. This is just taking it to this fiscal year. We've seen some success with this program, and we're hoping to expand the program. But to answer your question, yes, ma'am, it is four-tenths of a mil increase, and, but this is an effort to level the fund out itself and spend down some of that fund balance. But the advisory committee is aware of this, and we talked to them, I think, about this week and a half, two weeks ago now.
Did they approve, did they review and have input in the expenditures? Because the feedback I'm getting is that there's confusion with the fire chiefs, and that they felt like they've been left out of it, but if that's been rectified, then...
I sent, I sent all of the chiefs, not just, not just the advisory committee, but I sent them all an email outlining exactly what was gonna be put into this budget, and then confirmed it with the advisory committee, that, again, because of virtually everything else that's going on, we're trying to be as lean as possible. But as you'll recall, the fund balance for the rural fire control board was significant, so the intent has been to develop a capital program over the next five years that will give us an opportunity to spend that down and level it off in such a way that we can maintain a healthy fund balance in there and not an excessive fund balance. And this is just a continuation of that plan that we had put in place last year.
But this is, this is a half-million-dollar increase?
Total, yes, ma'am, is $547,000.
And if I could add to that-
I have a couple of other questions that I just want to make sure I get answered real quick, and I'll go ahead and get mine out of the way. I assume the budget is set for such that the geo-debt is still planning, we're still planning to pay that off by 2024?
Yes, ma'am.
And on the $900,000 that we received in the increase in revenue due to the increase in the value of the mill, what I saw was a $300,000 increase in the toward insurance policy. Was that because of an increase at the state level, or is that just, are we still at the same?
The state significantly increased our toward insurance, workers' comp insurance, as we've also had an increase in the health insurance for retirees. Those are the three categories that, since the inception of the general fund with the sheriff and solicitor broken out, those three expenses had increased approximately 144% while, or 44% while the value of a mill had gone up 14%. Going through this year's budget, we had a sit-down with the sheriff and solicitor, and again, iron that out, and they took the eight tenths and two tenths of a mil, but keep in mind, the sheriff, in addition to above the eight tenths of a mil he got, he also got $292,000 of unfunded expenses. The solicitor got, I think, a little more than $70,000 of unfunded expenses. Those, again, are expenses that are passed down through the state that we have no control over. In total, our budget, we've got about a million dollars right now in the general fund of expenses that, before we did anything, we were given by the state.
A million dollars in increase, unfunded mandates?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a couple of comments. My concern for the four-tenths of a mil increase for the firefighters, I don't have really an issue with the capital part of that, the personnel part of that, though, I do. I'm curious to know what actually, how did we benefit from those four firefighters? I assume there were four that were hired last year. One of the, one of the, my thoughts on that at that time was that we were gonna be able to promote, I'm gonna say promote from within, even though some of those firemen were maybe volunteers at a, in one of the fire tax districts, but we put some requirements on them that eliminated them from being able to apply for those jobs. So we really, in essence, were not, we were not promoting from within. We ended up hiring from the municipal fire departments, I believe, for those positions. And I'm just unfortunately not up to speed on what, how those positions were divvied up, and I'm not sure that it's, that it's equal and fair for the people who are paying into a fire tax district, and also paying for more personnel and firefighters that are not gonna be in, they're not gonna benefit from. And I understand being a donor district, I understand that firsthand, but I just, I'd like to have a little more information on what, how we benefited from those four positions, and, you know, I don't understand, we have a separate EMS program, and I'm just curious why we put those same parameters on the firemen that were hired for those previous four positions. So I just have some question, question about that. The second thing is that I am not in favor of, as y'all might imagine, I'm not in favor of using reserves for the CVB. I do think the hospitality funds are gonna be very much reduced, in spite of the restaurants really working hard to do as much business as they possibly could. I think those numbers are gonna be, are gonna be drastically reduced, and, you know, Chairman Johnson had even mentioned not charging, not, not having people pay those funds for March, April, and May, but we didn't mention that until the middle of April, so I don't, I don't think that's a possibility, and I don't think it matters because that money's collected specifically for that. But I would not be in favor of using reserves for the CVB, or I just don't think that's a proper use of that at this time.
Does council have a consensus on the hospitality tax budget at this point? Again, we give an overview, we've got basically about 2.2, 2.1 million dollars of expenses with $1 million of revenue, and we're planning right now to pretty much deplete our reserves at 1 million of revenue. Now, if the revenue comes in stronger than that, we'll do better, of course. You know, like I said, I've got, that's the fund that probably concerns me the most right now. How is that fund going to be impacted long-term? You go back to 2006, I think it was, we're bringing in about 2.2 million dollars a year in hospitality tax. It's grown wonderfully since then, but I don't want to go back to where we're barely covering our expenses. The desire would be to have that fund build up a balance that we can use towards Phase 1 of Project Riverbend.
Kevin, if I can ask a question, you know, every year, we've given different entities some of the, some of those hospitality dollars, and this year, I know, we, normally by now, we would have that list of folks, I'm sorry, I don't, the camera is right there, I think. But we would normally have a list of those folks, and are we just, are we gonna forego that for this year, for this budget?
Management is recommending that we do forego the hospitality and accommodation taxes given for the market and advertising aspects of where that money went, particularly hospitality tax. Now, we are still recommending the accommodation tax money for the CVB, be given to the CVB, but that would be it.
Kevin, if I could ask, when you talk about the reserve, you're talking about the age tax reserves, correct?
Yes, sir, correct.
I guess if the question you're, I think along the same lines as Allison, that we definitely need to look at that. Take a look and see if you have any other option. I will tell you, my biggest concern is that we're increasing the rural fire board budget by half a million dollars, and I think that's putting a big strain on it. And I would much rather us have the person that's eventually gonna be the director here helping to identify what additional expenditures need to go. My understanding is the call volume has gone down, and I think that that's a lot of money that gives us a big swing here. But I'll be happy to get more information from Andy and see what I'm missing.
Are we, are we close to having a person that's in place? I mean, are we weeks away, or, I mean-
We're close.
We're close, okay. I mean, if, I just think that, I think we floundered a little bit with fire departments over the past few years, and I think it's, it's very important to me, but I think it's also very important to our chiefs that, that we get this right, and, and so, I just, I hate, I hate to make big, big decisions like that, just a little bit ahead of somebody being hired that would, that would, I know budget season is here, but, you know, just, I think it's a big decision that somebody with a lot of expertise should weigh in on.
Yeah, and I would say that we are very close to, we're in the middle of the process to hire a director, and certainly, those decisions would be made on who would be, fill those positions would be made by the new director, but to your point, the tax increase would be in place prior to. Now, we may have them on, on board prior to third reading, I'm not sure if it's a possibility, but we are very close.
Well, what do you think, coming in? I also say, even if we got a new director, what do you think, coming in, he wouldn't be alone enough to be able to fit up us, just walking in the door? I bet we should take the leadership and- walking in the door? I bet we should take the leadership and, and put in place what we think should work. And if he needs to make adjustments along the way, then obviously he's able to do that. But I think we need to go ahead and lay the groundwork for any kind of increase, decrease, or hold instead of what we got.
Honestly, I have some, some questions. And Andy, if we could, virtually or however we need to, I'd like to meet with you and, and look at the numbers and, and get more of a, a better feel for the rural fire board increase.
I'll be at anybody's disposal.
Andy?
Yes, sir.
So we have four, we have four firemen that we hired last year, correct?
That's right.
And with this, this mileage increase, this is for, for four more?
Yes, sir. What we've got right now is we have two, two man teams that split their time between Oakdale and Bethesda and Hickory Grove and Sharon. So they'll spend a week kind of alternating between the east and west, for lack of a better term. The idea now is to concentrate efforts more to where we're not spreading the guys so thin. You know, they're on pace right now to run nearly 300 calls or assist on 300 calls this year with departments from all over the county. The idea then would be to just double that effort and double the impact. So yes, sir, that's, we have four now.
So the fire chiefs over the past year have, what's the feedback they've given you? How they like it now that they've had a year with it? Or what, what kind of feedback are you getting?
Well, I mean, there's, the, the feedback that we're getting is there's still some concerns about, you know, where they are at any given time. I think the chiefs, by and large, are used to having their districts. They know where their volunteers or their paid guys are at any given time. And then what you may have in a situation is the county guys showing up and helping. They have been there not only to lend a hand and really even being first on scene on a number of calls, but they've also been in a position to where they've caught issues with equipment, been able to inspect things, help out from district to district and station to station. So aside from some growing pains, which I think is the best way to describe this, I think the feedback has been positive and, to the point where we've gotten complimentary phone calls, we've got complimentary text messages. Hey, thanks for, you know, catching this. These guys were great for us. So, but it's, again, this is anecdotal. I don't have anything I can provide you other than what I've heard.
Have you had anybody, any fire chiefs express strong negativity about it?
Strong negativity? Well, I think that there's-
Let me just say negativity about it.
Oh, yeah. So I think most of the negative feedback that I have gotten from the chiefs is I don't know where they are at any given time. So the concern is you've got a chief maybe on the eastern side of the county, and there's an incident, and there's a thought that, well, they may be coming through two or three districts to come to my scene. And by my scene, I mean the scene in, on the eastern side. Well, we had, actually, we did. We had that issue. That was one of the kinks we had to work out where we had the guys would come across two districts to go to help in another district. And we, we, we put a stop to that. Those are some of the bugs that have been worked out. And I think some of the feedback that we've gotten from the chiefs is, well, let's just get this perfect before we add on to it. I think that, you know, we, we have worked through a lot of the bugs. But it's not a perfect system, but I think it's been so far an effective system. I think it has saved lives. It's certainly saved lives and property. And I think that just the addition of these crews is only going to help. And it's going to lessen volunteer fatigue. These guys are paid to run calls, whether it's an alarm call or a smoke alarm call or whatever that we know is bogus. They're paid to run that call. And we're not taxing our volunteers to do that when we paid guys to do it.
So did I hear you say that the fire chiefs kind of want this, the bugs to be worked out of the four that they have right, or we have right now before you add to it? Or did I misunderstand what you said?
No, you, I think you asked me specifically, what are, what are some of the negatives that we have heard? And I think that's one. Does, I don't know that that's the consensus. I would be surprised, certainly, if that is the consensus amongst chiefs, that we want to get this system perfect before we add anything to it. Because right now, we do not have a perfect system. And we can't expect a perfect system. We can just continue to learn and grow with what we're doing. But the effectiveness of the four guys that we've seen in the field to date has been, is, is inarguable.
Andy, where do you foresee the future for firefighters?
I, what I would like to see personally, just based on, on some of the demographic data, is you, you, you take the two new crews and dedicate them to the western part of the county, kind of a northwest and a southwest portion where they can help in the Clover, Bethany, Santiago area, one in the Hickory Grove, southern part of, or the southwest part of the county. And then dedicate the other two crews to the southwest or southeast part of the county that are, is largely uncovered with paid personnel.
So, so another one of my, my concerns, again, is that we're paying for this. We've got a, we've got, you know, a fire department that has a five mil cap. And, and I think we should have put some effort into raising that to 10 mil, to a 10 mil cap, so that those taxpayers, in other words, I'd rather ta, I'd rather max out some of the taxpayers in individual areas before I would, you know, make these other departments that are, that have, that have a lot of expenses pay, pay for that. So if we've got a department, most of the departments are 10 mils. But if we've got departments that are five mils, then, then we need to be getting that on a referendum so that the people that live in those areas can, can vote to, to afford more of their own fire departments, I mean firefighters, simply, simply because, I mean, if, if we're, if we added four last year and we're adding four years this year, which was what my concern was going to be last year when we added the four. And we were told they were going to go to a couple of specific fire departments. And I'm not sure that they actually went to those fire departments. So, so we are, again, it's, it's a tax district versus a rural overall issue, in, in my opinion. And I don't want to slight anybody when it comes to fire, fire service and, and, you know, public safety. But, but I think we need to look at this as, as a, as a bigger umbrella of, of the county. And, and again, I'm just going to say that, that I would really like for somebody to be here and be making these decisions that, that, you know, I feel, I, I just want somebody that I can feel really comfortable with and, and confident in, in these decisions. Because I don't foresee Bethel getting the fire depart, getting any of these folks. But we, we are, you know, we're self-funding a fire department, but we're not benefiting from, from an increase of, you know, half a million dollar increase, you know, countywide.
I will echo some of those sentiments regarding, I'd like, I'd like more information on this five mil increase and how that, and what that looks like. I will say this, though, I, I think this is kind of a fundamental difference I have with Ms. Love. We've had this debate before. I, I truly believe it is the role of the county to make sure that every fire department is able to respond to every call all the time. And I, I realize that we're spreading this tax across the county. And so people in, in unincorporated Port Mill, people in Lake Wally are paying this so that, you know, Oakdale can operate. But if Oakdale can't operate properly, then that money needs to come out of, needs to come from somewhere. And, and we need, we need to make sure that every fire department has whatever it needs to respond to every call all the time. Now, whether that fired, no matter where you are in the county, it should not matter. And I think that's, ultimately, we need to make sure that's our driving force in this. And if this increase, just to add four more firefighters, doesn't accomplish that, then we don't need to do it. But I think if it does, we need to get very clear that we've got it. And I, and I totally get the, we don't want to give them a countywide system. I've heard that argument before. But I, I think we have to, we have to try to make sure that no one is getting, you know, inferior service just because they can't afford it. And I also, I will say, I do agree with Allison. I am worried about all of this using general funds for the H tax. That, that concerns me. I, I'm, I'm more concerned that, that, you know, depending on what this fall looks like, restaurants might see an even greater hit in the fall. And how long that'll last into next year, I think we need to, I think we need to be very careful how we move forward using H tax and especially spending down literally all of its reserves. That concerns me.
All right. I've heard three people express some concerns. I'm just going to throw this out there, a suggestion for council to think about. If we adjusted the budget and sort of took a wait-and-see approach with the hospitality tax funds for the CVB, if the revenues are coming in stronger than expected, then we can fund the CVB. It's basically $75,000 a quarter that we're giving them. If revenues are not coming in strong, then we would not fund them. That's just a suggestion to put out there, having heard from three of y'all on that. But again, it's council's decision, but I've heard three concerns at this point.
I'll say that I don't want to end the funding of CVB. I don't want to just turn off that spigot and they, and they're, and they're dead. But certainly, if we look around and we say to ourselves that large sporting events, large tourism activities will not happen at all this year, then the CVB shouldn't need as large a budget. You know, because what they do is they contribute to those types of events. So that money should never have to be spent. And so I think what we need to do is coordinate with them and determine what is or isn't going to happen in York County over the next 18 months and start backing out some of that funding that would have gone to those specific events. You know, and I'm, I'm not talking about shutting them down and there's no CVB. I, I, that would be a mistake, I think. But we do need to start accounting for what is actually going to happen in York County and what is not from a tourism standpoint.
Kevin, I, you know, I'm a big supporter of the CVB. And I think we need to look at it closely. I do believe they have cut a lot of their expenditures because of that. There, there's nothing, you know, they, they're not spending on marketing or getting things right now because they can't. So I think they've cut expenditures. This is one of the concerns I had, and I'll, I'll bring it up with tying up all the money that we did to buy that 1,900 acres and one of the reasons I voted against that. Because we were basically taking everything to pay for that and not leaving much for any contingencies if something happened. So I don't, I don't fully support penalizing the CVB because of our oversight and spending all of our money and tying it up for a project that we did that they had no input or control over.
If we can, I'm sorry, if we can also get just information, I know that he's done a great job of getting resources. Billy with the CVB has been able to get a lot more income from those other sources, is, is being able to just make sure that, similar to what Chairman Johnson said, is, is just taking a look at it, opening the books up and let's see what's really needed. So that we don't, we don't put other areas in jeopardy of not being able to have some, some revenue.
And they have not gotten a lot of those sources from the hotels that they had planned on getting because hotels aren't booking any rooms, just like we aren't getting the accommodation stacks. So they've had a cut on that side as well, where they were thinking they were going to be making up some revenue from that. And that's not happened because, again, nothing's happening in tourism or hotels or anything much.
I, I, I think Kevin might have said it best. I mean, we're just going to have to have a measured response. And it's a little uncertain. I agree with Robert about the importance of the CVB. But I, I, I don't, I can't say it better than Kevin said it. We just kind of have to measure the response and see how we can maneuver this.
I, I think there's some unknowns. I think the number one unknown is how much money's going to come in, 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 in the revenues. So I think the, there's a, there's kind of a downtime. And if it's, you know, they're kind of like my business right now. I'm saving a lot of money because I don't have employees and I don't have, I don't have expenses going out that I would normally have. So, so, but there is also going to be a little time of recovery after this. And you can't stop marketing because you lose ground. So I think, I think, you know, what I would like to know from the CVB is what, you know, what is, what is their, I don't, and maybe it's in this, I don't know where that budget comes from. But, but, you know, what, how, how has their budget changed percentage-wise? And how do we apply maybe what, what we're going to determine to that so that they are not, you know, left stranded, but know that we do have, we do got, we do have a little bit of time that is kind of downtime for them. I know, so, so just, we need to kind of match those things. And Kevin, maybe you can work with, work and see what that budget is and, and maybe you already have. But I, I would just be interested to know when, you know, how their budget changed. You know, like, you know, county manager says that we've cut back on our training and our trips and things like that. And I'd like to see that, you know, has the CVB also done that? How, how streamlined and tight have they gotten their budget? And then let's try and match what we're doing with, with what they've done.
I do believe Billy, and I, I don't think I ever opened up the email, but Billy did send me last week, I believe, their budget. I haven't had a chance to go through that yet. I would like, and this is something I want to put out there now for the council, and I apologize for the crazy workshop schedule right now, to see if the meeting on the 11th, if it works for everybody and everybody's fine with this, to have the nonprofits, including the CVB, come to present their budgets and their particular request. Again, right now, we have the CVB scheduled for the same $300,000 that they were planning to get. And we've kept all the other nonprofits at the same funding they had in the previous year. But if that works for everybody on council, we will get in touch with those organizations next week and see if they can make their selves available for, to participate in our Zoom meeting for the workshop on the 11th. And, you know, Billy does a great job of communicating with y'all. And he can go through and explain how everything's come in or not come in. I will say this, in discussion with Billy, the hos, the money from the hotels came in very strong for their fiscal year 20, I believe. I think he told me that they actually achieved their budgeted numbers for that. But of course, they did fall off dramatically when the, the virus took place over here. So I think going forward, he's going to have a strong revenue stream coming in from the hotels and particularly with, you know, the new sports center up and running in downtown Rock Hill. I think their future's going to be very strong financially. But, you know, I, I do want to be measured in how we spend our reserves down, particularly in that fund, because I never want to put ourselves in a position where we're forced to use a debt service mileage to make payments on the land. And I, you know, I will say this, I, I certainly don't regret the purchase of the land. While it did make up, you know, maybe about 60% of our projected revenues going forward, I think that land will benefit the county for the rest of the, for, you know, for generations, generations. I don't think Robert was trying to say he's against the land, but it did put us in a bad position with this virus coming.
Kevin, I appreciate that. I was just about to make a suggestion that we hear from Billy on this. And I'll add to the, the pot of concerns. My other concern is that we're not hamstringing their ability to help the county bounce back once we come through this and that they're, they have the, the proper funds where they can bid on, on different events to come in here for next year. Because I think they're kind of a year behind with how they work, but we need to talk to, to Billy about that. But I want to make sure that they have every ability to help bring in events and those tourists into the county as we bounce back from this and help our hotel owners and our restaurant owners recover as well. So it'd be great to hear from him and hear his thoughts on that.
Everyone, our goal was to run about an hour. We're about at the seven o'clock mark. Is there, I think everybody has pretty much been heard from at this point. If you have anything else, now would be the time to kind of throw it out there so that it can be addressed next week at our next meeting and, you know, that everybody knows that what's, what's, what's coming at that next meeting.
I have two quick things if I could, Michael.
Oh, yeah.
First, Andy, is there a report? You mentioned that the, the new paid firefighters have run probably or assisted on probably about 300 calls. Is there a report we can see on where they assisted and, and where those calls were?
Sure, I'll be glad to pull some CAD data for you and we can work through that.
All right, thank you. And Kevin, on page four of the budget message, do you have the notebook in front of you?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm just looking at the, the, the chart. When we look at commercial property and you're showing the, the change in the tax bill for commercial property at the top half, you know, with the, the general mileage and stuff, we show a decrease of $9 for the commercial property owners. Then we show the rural fire board, the waste, solid waste and recreation on there. And then we still show a decrease of $6 on the total unincorporated area under the commercial property. And I believe that should be a slight increase on that, just as it is on the owner occupied home. It's an 80 cent increase when you add in all the, the special, the rural fire board and stuff. So I think that is a, a typo of some sort on that chart there.
I think you, and I'm, I'm struggling to read this on, in print right now. I'm going to go with dark lighting, not my age. In the incorporated area, we-
In the incorporated area, we have an overall decrease and that's driven by the projected drop in the debt service fund. We do have a corresponding increase in the unincorporated area coming across of half a mil. So, and this is to Robert's point, it should be, and I go through and check, they've got a formula obviously mixed up, that two tenths of a mil should equate to an overall increase. And two tenths of a mil is going to be 80 cents, a dollar twenty for every 100,000 of commercial property is what that would equate to. So in the grand scheme of things, we're not talking about a lot of money, but it is an increase in the unincorporated area. And I will get that sheet updated, make sure the formulas are working and send the properly updated one out to everyone. Thank you, Robert.
Yeah, I just want to make sure if, if we've got the public viewing this and stuff and we're looking at it, that, you know, obviously, there's, there's a decrease overall on the top part of that chart, but when you go to the fund millage, you have to pull on the unincorporated area, it still shows we got a $12 increase for the fire board, $3 for the solid waste, and then we're showing a $6 decrease in total taxes. So I think the math's off a little bit somewhere there. It should show a slight increase. It's not, not a very big one, but it should show a slight increase.
Yes, sir. And I, I think it's, the sign just got switched on that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to belabor the meeting. I know we've got, had a long day. The one thing that I did not ask, the first page of the budget message, you have bolded the 15 and 3% increase on water and sewer rate from the city of Rock Hill having negative impacts on the county. Is that something that, that translates into the budget for this year?
Yes, ma'am. That had a negative impact in the budget of about $750,000.
Okay, I, I'll be happy to follow that up at our next meeting. I know we've been meeting a while. And I'll get some more details from you.
When is that, when is that increase?
July 1st, is it?
I believe it is July 1st. I'm not certain though, but I believe so.
So y'all don't even want me to say on screen what, how I feel about an increase on water rates right now, because a 15% increase in, on water and sewer for county residents is a, probably a 40 to 60% increase on blue granite water customers. So that is absolutely just, I mean, it's, it's just, and I, I mean, they just reduced their utility fees. I'm happy about that because I have a business in the city of Rock Hill. But this, this all but makes up for, for anything they were trying to do that was a, a positive there.
Anybody else that definitely would like us to, to hear more about the, the Rock Hill increase? We need to, we do need to discuss that.
Yes. And Michael, if you don't mind, you said I could make a comment about my, my zoning, my Z B A meeting. If anybody's watching in, out in the Bethany area, the western side of the county, that's been calling me about Whitworth Road and a zoning meeting out there. I had told some people that I was going to try to have that zoning, that Z B A meeting or that particular hearing changed because internet service is basically non-existent. And so they're probably not watching the Zoom meeting either. But if they are, that meeting cannot be postponed according to our county attorney. So they will need to call the county zoning department at 803-909-7278. If they have any questions about what's going on with that Whitworth property, they can help them answer that. And they do need to try to see how they can get on that Zoom meeting to be able to express their concerns.
Robert, what, what was that number again? I've had calls about that also.
803-909-7278 is county zoning. And that's where it says to, for people to call if they have questions on their, on zoning.
That's on that event, is that on that event venue? Is it an event?
Yes.
So can, what else can, I've had several calls about that. So can they, can they email you or do they email the Z B A? What, what do you think on that?
Michael Kendry in his email suggested they talk to planning and zoning. The only person who can postpone it is the applicant, and it doesn't seem like he has any willingness to do that. But that if they talk to the zoning staff, my understanding is that those comments can be forwarded from the zoning staff to the Z B A and stuff. So I would say they're welcome to send them to me, I'll forward them. But I would say, you know, if they can call that number or contact them directly, that might be better than trying to do it secondhand.
Okay. Good information on that.
Mike?
Anyone else? Go ahead, Brett. And this popped in my head from recent discussion, but when is the Baxter Convenience Center, when is the lease up on that?
We are, it's a, it's a 2022 lease. But you got to remember, and I think we've discussed this before, you know, there, the environmentals that will need to be, the remediation, for lack of a better term, on that, on the property that they're at now will precipitate the closure earlier than the end of the year. We'll probably have to close it, I think, in October, November to do some work cleaning it up, but 2022.
So that's not in part of this budget? It's not anything in this budget directed at that?
There is. There's a capital expenditure for, I believe, the acquisition of a new site and then some money towards the construction of a new site. And that's a, a topic that myself, Mr. Hudson and Andy were discussing before this meeting, that, you know, management plans on drilling down to a little bit more, because if you're looking at spending, you know, potentially four, five, six million dollars on a site and to build a site, is that the most cost-effective way to serve the citizens in that area?
Or we do this again next week? All right, I think everybody has kind of given their input. David, Kevin, we would ask that you all get us those answers and certainly be responsive to any council members this week. And we will, we will do this again. I, I will say that I, I want to make sure that when we have our public hearing on the budget, that we are back in council chambers and that we are doing this where everyone could have the ultimate, you know, the best way to have access. So I, my hope is that we are in council chambers for our first meeting in June. Anybody have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
A move. First and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Close hearing, none. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.